You're logged in on me, so just go ahead.
That didn't work.
I'm actually trying to be helpful, not problematic.
I'm glad it's not pouring down there for two minutes.
I have my reusable bag, by the way.
Is it recording?
Yes, it is.
Okay. It is recording, so we can officially begin. Dawn, I believe you're the vice chair. Can't recall that. Or you are? Okay.
So we'll call the meeting to order, and we'd like to have roll call. So, I don't know how we do that exactly. Do you, Wesley, do you do roll call? Is that you?
There we go.
Time down.
Roll call.
Dawn's here.
Dawn.
Sarah's here.
Sarah.
Catherine. And we have a forum.
And then we need to approve the minutes.
I'll come over and I approve them.
Second bell. Did you have anything you want?
No, I wasn't here, so I assumed that it was. If you guys say it was all covered, then.
Well, and Mitch sent in this extra part that Anne-Marie sent out in the email, because he wasn't here and there was a little confusion about his piece. So he emailed that in since he's taking somebody to the airport at the moment. He couldn't come today.
Does that get added to the minutes?
What's that? The piece that Mitch emailed us that you sent out yesterday about his food thing?
All of that?
Yes. So hopefully, today, we'll need to decide what the presentation is going to be. And from Mitch's email, I mean, it's very succinct, so I would say it would just be a matter of.
He'll be kind of.
Typing this and. Yeah. Yes, and so you all need to decide how you want to do the presentation. If you want to have Dave Price do the entire presentation as the chair. If you want to split it up amongst people, those are some of the things that you need to decide.
I feel a little nervous about speaking in front of City Council, just because I'm shy about it. I feel like he's probably pretty good at that, and he delivered his presentation to us here pretty well. I'm fine with him kind of at least leading and starting it, and then if there, he can kind of hand off, you know, for the other portion to Mitch and then to Catherine. That's what I, my opinion anyways. I don't know how you feel. How you feel about it?
Well, I'm happy to speak or not. You know, I'm comfortable in front of people, and we need to practice. I'm happy to have to practice. I've spoken in front of the City Council a couple of times.
Yeah, I guess my opinion would be that it would be great to have Dave Price do the presentation this time, and then others must be there if the City Council has specific questions, as opposed to breaking it up into pieces. Dave can keep it to the point. He's a good presenter, and then Mitch and Catherine can be there to answer questions where they're specific.
I agree with that, yeah. I was wondering, so if we wanted to just meet as a group for a coffee or something to talk about presenting or whatever, is that allowed? Is that okay for us to do? Or are we then the committee?
It would have to just be two of us. Only two of you.
Okay. So two of us and I, I can do that.
So when I ran in, I bumped into Mitch. I think we talked for a bit. And he said he had put a request into one of the council people about us being able to have a meeting between the meetings. It's a work meeting, which we talked about originally, being able to meet twice a month, having a work meeting and then a meeting, so we can.
And that's the kind of thing that that request needs to go through you, doesn't it?
Yeah, I don't know why Mitch requests, Council doesn't have anything to do with that.
Oh, I don't know. I guess it was.
It's public meeting law.
He was somewhere, and they were in the same room together, and so he just brought it up. It wasn't like he went.
Dawn's correct. It's public meeting law. I mean, it's state.
Yeah.
It's state law.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm not debating that it's not the current law. I'm just saying, how do we move forward in a better, more rapidly and more efficiently when we're only meeting with each other an hour and a half a month?
We'd have to have special meetings of Anne-Marie, or other staff would have to be there. It would have to be Anne-Marie, and if she's not available. But, but yeah.
I think one thing, when you forwarded me that email about, like, the committee being a thing, I was kind of like, alright, I can handle once a month, you know? I can handle this amount of time. I think if it were meeting really, you know, several times a month, I don't know if I'd be able to do it.
Well, let me interject, that unfortunately, it's a moot point, because staff doesn't have time for more than once a month. Once a month it is.
Okay.
Well, we just do the best we can. And today, so to focus on our time, we need to focus on the presentation. So it sounds like you've decided that Dave is going to present. We know the section Mitch emailed what he wants presented, so Dave has this.
And if I remember right, Mitch also had a couple of diagrams to go with it. That was from two months ago, so.
Okay.
I vaguely remember him having some kind of, oh, like the heart. That might have been specific to Valentine's Day. I don't know, but anyway. But there was something that was a very nicely done logo, kind of a.
I wonder why he didn't include it too. Well, he says, I'll just read it. "The idea is called Flavors 101, a week-long food fest for local centurions that showcases our local chefs preparing dishes and distributing the recipes at the intersection of four aspects: sustainable, local, healthy, and easy." Ed Drystod of Explore Lincoln City reacted very favorably to the concept, affirming that it is very much in line with the philosophy of his own programs. He specifically mentioned the desirability of volunteer help organized by our community in making it peaceful. Committee. Donna Riani of the Culinary Center also loves the idea, as long as any participation from her does not add to her workload. Last time I checked, Ed was still favorable, but had not made any commitments to move forward. Since he is the most appropriate person to implement the concept, our work on it is done until such time as Explore Lincoln City wants to work on it, unless Council decides that this is something they want to push forward. So he's, this is something that the committee determined they wanted to do, so this idea would be part of the presentation, and then Council would say, yes, move forward, and then, and then the committee would work with Explore Lincoln City and Donna on how to volunteer, et cetera. It would not be Explore Lincoln City moving forward on it. So.
Yeah.
So that part of the presentation is easy. It's just.
Kind of a little nugget, little idea.
Yeah. A little nugget idea. Does Council want to move forward on this? So that part's easy.
So if Dave were to want a slide from Mitch, do we need to find ways back here today? Or could we just say, we're good with him getting a slide from Mitch that has these slides?
We could probably say an email or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, just say, we're good with.
A slide or a presentation.
With Mitch getting a slide for the presentation.
So, agenda, the final presentation to City Council, this is going to be 20 minutes for each item, right?
No, that's.
The whole thing, 20 minutes.
No, there won't be 20 minutes for each item. It'll be more like 10.
Okay.
Total.
For the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are.
A lot of talking.
No, that's for today's meeting.
Okay, okay. For some reason, I was thinking that was like.
Okay, so you're just saying, we're going to spend 20 minutes finally?
And that was, and as if we needed it. That was before I knew that neither Dave nor Mitch would be here, so obviously, we don't need 20 minutes to talk about the food.
Pretty succinct, and it's the idea that we need to get across. As far as recruiting volunteer, all of that stuff, we can't do any of that without the City Council.
Exactly. Yes. So present the idea, and then, and that's what this is too, so present.
An idea.
The idea, and the Council says, yeah, this is great. And then, and then we come back and start working on all the things.
Timeline.
Yeah. Yeah. And same with this.
Okay. Okay. With the presentation to City Council about the plastic part of it, the plastic band, do we want to talk now about specific plastics or anything? I mean, I'm kind of leaning toward just leaving it to what Dave already kind of spoke with all of us about, except for if you weren't here, but.
It's the attachment to.
Yeah.
Well, that article that you sent out through Anne-Marie's era on what Chicago's doing, that's had some very succinct kind of things. You could probably just take that and, whoop, write it. I mean, I bet it's a very well-done article, very specific about what they're doing and how they're doing it, so.
And that was only from two weeks ago. And in the article, it says, like, 300 cities around the nation, you know, in our country only have done that. So I think looking towards what other cities have done is really smart.
It would make sense for, in the presentation, for Dave to mention, you know, blah, 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 number of cities in the US have reportedly done this, with Chicago being the latest and biggest for some reason, you know? But I don't know that we want to use that presentation.
I will tell you that, not at this, not at the City Council meeting last night, but at the one two weeks ago, they passed a resolution that they want to work on a ban.
Really?
For styrofoam and plastic.
Just for, for all single-use styrofoam and plastics?
A single-use styrofoam and plastic.
Because that is part of one of the big.
So I don't, I don't know that the presentation needs to.
Go into detail.
Do a lot of time convincing them of the fact that it's needed, because they want it.
Okay, so it's not the fact that it's needed, it's maybe some targets and some ideas.
Yes.
Implementation. And that would.
Method of application.
Yeah. Which is Dave had in that presentation.
Yes, he did. I think it looks great.
Yeah. And there's stuff here that you guys, you know, how, how do you determine? How do you give incentives?
And who do you target? And all of that kind of stuff, so.
One thing I was getting a little kind of sad and frustrated about really is that, because I really, I want to include or make sure that, because it is a single-use plastic, it's like clear coffee cups, like Frappuccino kind of. The only bad thing is that there are not that many good alternatives to those kinds of cups. Sometimes it's a little greenwashed. It's like, oh, these are all, these are, you know, recycled plastic.
I heard that.
Like, oh, cool, but it's still plastic. So that's my only worry, is like, making sure that we present it, or, you know, and the Councils are equal with it, whatever, but just kind of, then when it comes back to us, I think we all should spend some more time researching options that are not just greenwashed kind of options, because there's a lot out there. When I was just pretending like I was going to go order a bunch, there's a lot that are kind of like, okay, well, it's compostable, but only in industrial facilities, and in which case, that a lot of times is just as bad as plastic.
I've gotten over where we have to order something, that I contact Brianna and say, is this true, or is this? Actually, I just, she's made done so much research on it, I just want a true or false, it's all I need to know.
I wonder if she can be a resource for us then. I know she's really busy. I actually thought about sending her an email before today's meeting to say, like, do you have some links for legit alternatives to some of these?
Probably be something that we could, like you said, start looking more into once we get the.
Okay.
Which we probably will get, since they already want a ban.
I think so.
We want to provide some guidance, so.
Yes.
Okay. And we're just saying, hey, yeah, we want to help.
Okay.
So we're focusing on strategies, targets, that type of thing in the presentation, which is presentation, or he does, so.
Okay. So, in the presentation, he's going to be talking about possibly using some of the tourism tax to offset costs for businesses and stuff. And it sounds like, from the note, you know, from what you sent out, that it is going to be pointed a little bit to the finance department too, so we're not going to have to do all the light work with that and stuff, right? It's like, we have to look into some alternatives, but they'll be doing some of that too, it sounds like.
I don't know.
Here's my suggestion on that part. My suggestion is to revise this part of the presentation, and rather than suggesting that it's the TRT, just simply suggest the city devote a small portion of its budget, and let the city decide what portion of the budget.
That would probably be much better.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Instead of being told what pocket to take.
So that would be my.
I understand his reasoning, because it seems like it's just this pot of money out there, but, yeah. Yeah, that's right. Okay. I'm good with that.
Did Dave do this? Does he have the hard copy, the computer?
I think.
I don't have a copy.
It says DP, Draft underscore DP. I assume that means Dave Price.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, it sounds like his wording to me, so.
All right. So where did you guys find that?
This is attached to the end of the agenda she sent out. There's an agenda, and then the minutes, and then the last couple of pages.
Oh, I didn't scroll down.
Yeah. I have to learn to keep scrolling up to the end.
Well, I scrolled, and I went to print it, it was 12 pages, and I was like, what? It's okay.
They kept going and going.
Yeah. Good to know. I have a two-sided printer though, so. It's only six. But still. Anyway, do we need to vote on that, or do we just by consensus say we agree that we want to make the funding piece of it more generic?
I think it'd be good to say at least something by consensus or a vote, so that in the record.
I think it's a good idea.
I concur.
Yeah, okay.
It's unanimous.
Yeah, he has some notes at the bottom too, like implementation notes, basically, city, you know, it's like going into details there at the bottom of the part that he cut out.
Yeah, he does.
So that's something that wouldn't be in the presentation, is that right?
Well, he might kind of mention that.
It could be, yeah, because it's got. Okay. Oh, yeah. I remember him talking about that in his slide presentation, about having a target, a set.
The article about Chicago basically says that, you know, and they haven't fully done it yet, but they're like, they didn't offer to help financially at all, but they basically said they have a huge list of companies that can help all businesses. It also said that the businesses can opt for a waiver, which I was kind of annoyed about, you know, reading, because it was saying, oh, if it's too much of a financial hardship for you to change, you know, you can get a partial or full waiver. And it was like, yeah, that sounds like BS to me, but.
I think those are the specific, the ones that didn't have on-site kitchens.
Yeah, but it's kind of like, you know, if that's your model, it's sort of.
Maybe for places big as Chicago, but a small community like ours, I think that'd be a nightmare.
Yeah.
I think.
I don't want to do that.
I agree. Okay, all right. I think, yeah, I think this would be good, just take out the. So I had forgotten what was in the little.
One note, and I don't know, this could be something we'll talk about in more detail later, but the health department sometimes is hard with this kind of stuff, because when a place doesn't have a dishwasher, like, for instance, when we opened up the Squid, they were like, oh, well, we have to approve your drain for your dishwasher, but good news, she actually called us, good news, if you, if you want to avoid all this, you won't have to go through us at all, if you just use disposable plastic cups. And it was like.
No, thank you.
No way. Freaked out a little bit, although it's just not in line with the kind of, you know, product I wanted to sell, but anyways.
That's the wrong group, so.
Yeah. But it's one thing to think about, because places like Jay's Fish and Chips, or whoever, you know, if they could try to pull that card, and it's like, well, then you have six months to get a dishwasher.
I mean, they're in cahoots.
Yeah.
So anything else on the plastics portion?
I'm really happy that it sounds like they've already planned.
I remember a year ago, I was talking to the mayor about the bag thing, and he said, oh, we're going way up higher than the bag thing. So I was like, oh, this is interesting, that way back then, he already had said they were sending their sites way beyond just the bag.
Well, I think if Lincoln City bans all styrofoam containers, I don't think it's a help, you know, no matter what the health department says, Jay's still is going to have to figure out what to do with their products.
Yeah.
They can still use plastic alternatives, I guess, but.
Well, utensils, like, plastic utensils, they slap them down the table no matter what, but it's like, okay, they're going to have to use real ones, or get the, you know.
Expensive wood, or whatever, yeah, whatever.
Those cornstarch ones, OHSU's been using forever, and I don't think they're that expensive, so they can switch to those. But yeah, it's kind of like, get with the program, that change. I show no mercy.
Well, it's all doable. It just is, I mean, there's things that will come up, and there will be things that they will argue back about. They, the business, hotel, whatever.
Yeah. Coffee cups, cold coffee cups.
Cold coffee cups are going to be harsh.
I know.
Dead artists.
I, for a minute, was like, thinking, I wonder if we should leave those alone for now, but I hate females. They kill me, so I, I feel like it can be done, especially if so many cities are doing it. So then Dave, if Dave presents all three items, he'll just need to have, you know, he has the plastic one down there, we'll have to have this one, and then Mitch's.
Right. So what, what do we mean education? It's just, on here, it just says.
Catherine's.
Right. So the.
What do you want in?
Right. And, and so when, last, at the last meeting, we decided, talking about pesticide and herbicide issue, that going at it from a framework of educating people to alternatives was the best way to go, than doing the signage.
So this is a general education? This is education specific to pesticides?
Yes, pesticides and herbicides. And what I, and how to, yeah, and that was, so.
I'm going to say educational ideas regarding.
Right. As I said, it was just.
Regarding pesticides, herbicides, alternatives.
Yeah, I didn't really know what to say there, and I just threw this together, so.
Is the focus on clean water, or is it just on the whole general?
Well, what we decided was that we wanted to look at this in the idea of protecting the watershed, and, but if, anything that's being sprayed eventually ends up in the watershed.
That's just how that works.
And so, but we decided not to talk about the environment, that we were specifically going to be talking about the water. So that's why we're looking at educational options of how to.
How to protect our water supply.
Well, how does.
I'm just trying to understand, sorry, I'm not, yeah.
No, that's okay. It's.
That's our objective.
Yeah, so Dave only needs to know.
I understand that, I just wrote this two hours ago. I will redo it.
Yeah.
I'm not Dave, okay?
It's okay.
No, I'm, sorry. You guys, I put that man up on the cover so nobody can. So, you know, I really don't want to do this for you people anymore. I don't belong in this group. And just no matter what I bring to the table, I get kinged up on, and I'm tired of it. So I really think we need to find a replacement.
For me, these are really, really good ideas, Catherine. I just wanted to figure out, how do we, how do we tell them, this is the problem we're trying to solve, and then here are ideas for educating people? That's what I'm asking. I'm sorry I'm not asking it well.
All I was doing on this list was saying, these are some of the things that we looked at, as far as how to approach this as a committee. And the two main things were the creation with the city's permission, or collaboration. I have a nonprofit that I'm developing, and the focus of the nonprofit is mostly this kind of thing. It's bigger than this, but it includes these kinds of things. So what I had said as part of this is educating people about the natives and the non-natives, what's growing in the first place, why are they spraying it because they don't, if they understand what's growing in their yards or in their businesses, they may have a different idea of how to work with it rather than killing it, because a lot of the things that people are killing are edibles and medicinals that are very vital to the, to the ecosystems of the area, and can be utilized by people in their homes or in businesses. So part of it is to having, what we talked about, we're having brochures identifying the natives and edibles, also having videos that explaining, you know, visually showing what they are talking about, what their properties are, what they can be used for, showing people what, how to, how to offset the invasive weave with native edibles and medicinals, so that it makes the environment as a whole more sustainable. Some of this can be done through permaculture, education. It's a fair, it's not as succinct as what you guys are doing. You know, this is a fairly broad, ongoing kind of a conversation, educating people, encourage them to make a better choice, unless the city is going to ban some of pesticides and herbicides the way other cities have, like glyphosate, which I would love to see them to, but that didn't even come up in our conversation, is ask the city to ban some of these hardcore pesticides and herbicides that are, have been proven to cause cancer and all kinds of things, and yet they're still being sold in our stores, so.
I think then the objective here, if I can summarize, tell me if I'm wrong, is this portion of the presentation is that the committee would like City Council's direction to move forward with putting together education for the residents of Lincoln City on natives, edibles, pesticides, and herbicides alternatives. And these are some of the ideas we have that we would implement if given authority to move forward. Does that?
Yeah, that was lovely. I would add medicinals, but not just edibles, but edible.
Plant, native plants.
Native plants.
You said native plants instead of bringing in the edibles and medicinals. I mean, in the.
I think that's an important component of it, though, as far as educating people, it's the worth of the plants.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, if we keep it broad, then we can include, because there's edibles, medicinals, and there's also native plants we're planting for wildlife and, you know, so it goes beyond just that.
Well, those are edibles, in my opinion. I don't, I don't separate between animals, I mean.
I guess I'm just thinking in terms of how the City Council hears. If we say native plants, that's something they can grab onto and understand. If we say edibles and. If we say edibles and medicinals, I'm not hearing that.
Some people are not familiar, I guess, though, yeah.
Well, that's, that's all. Yeah, I understand. I did send them all the link to the Incredible Edible video, which I believe they all watched, which is that town in London that converted everything to edibles and medicinals.
Oh, you said it to city council?
I did, a year ago. Oh, that was before I became a committee.
Yeah, I think something that's kinda like backyard foraging, or like, you know, something that's kinda like workshops or whatever. I think people then could, 'cause a lot of people don't know anything about, so, you know...
Well, that's what I discovered when I'm talking with people about plants. I tend, as part of the nonprofit, I take people out on hikes, and I talk to them about what's growing. But the amount of things that grow naturally in our yards here, or when I was living in Mount Chass, in any city, half of the plants that naturally will come up that people wanna kill and pull out, throw in the trash, are either edible or medicinal. And, and then they go to the store and buy pills, you know? I'm like, if you knew that's what was growing in your yard and could harvest it and make tea out of it, you'd save yourself a lot of money, and you'd be benefiting the environment. So, it seems, so how to work that? You know, that, it, it, but I think you, what you said was good, Amber.
Okay. And, um... And then we'll just, we'll put some of these ideas in. I don't wanna put anything in, uh, 5B I want to remove, for sure.
I agree.
Because...
'Cause what we're talking about is, we're asking them how to move forward or not.
Oh, that was one of the big things that Dave brought up that I thought we all liked so much.
Dave did bring it up, and it was a big thing. But Dave was under the mistaken impression that the community center is pesticide-free, and it is not.
Oh, yep, so you found that out.
Which is why I'm saying we need to remove 5B.
But it's, um...
You're kidding, they're not.
So, um...
So, so...
So, we, we want some direction from the city council about moving forward on this idea, and then how to move forward, we can figure out after. So, it's not, we wanna get into detail about...
We don't even figure out the how. We have some ideas of the how, which we can say. These are some of ideas.
These are some ideas, yes.
If city council says, "Yes," it would be great for Sustainability Committee to...
This is a public meeting, right?
It is.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I think I was, I could hear him talking outside of, uh, with the people next door, but...
Oh. It's annoying.
We'll make someone angry, so... I don't know what I'm gonna do.
I, well, that's how I feel. I'm like, "How am I supposed to do this?" So, I, I can...
Sometimes you can't.
We are mutually frustrated.
So, so, and, um, so all these things were just kinda pitching ideas. The city will be like, "Yes, yeah." So, just because I don't, I don't really know. Do they end up saying stuff right away? Like, when Dave's done presenting, we're all sitting there, they will ask questions, and we'll answer them, and then they kinda go, "Cool, we're moving on to, you know, other stuff now."
It depends.
Or sometimes, oh, thanks, they'll say, "We have to think about it. We have another meeting, and then we'll tell you later," you know?
Okay, and so then we kinda do some...
They can even look at it and go, "Okay, we're not gonna talk about that."
Yeah, that just is...
Okay.
Yeah, there are a lot of things that could happen, but, um... So, I mean, this, since, since we're discovering that the, that they're spraying at the community center, 'cause I thought the city wasn't spraying. Isn't that what somebody said at one of the meetings, that the city wasn't spraying, but the county is?
One of the city councilors was here and said that the city does not use pesticides.
That's right. That, that was in the...
I gave her the same line. She was at one of our meetings and said that, so...
But, you know, it's the presently...
I think it might have been either...
Public Works. Public Works does not.
That's, I mean, nobody in the city does it.
Parks and Rec.
She was, I think she did say...
Remember, they considered you saying CHS Lila, which is Public Works.
That's what it works, okay.
So, Parks and Rec is a different department.
Park, okay.
Did they say what they're spraying?
They are happy to come give you a presentation.
If, if that's, if that's... So, that might be something after, if the city wants to, if the city council. Okay.
I think, from what we've heard, it was, they just couldn't deal with their budget, the amount of time and budget, they, it was tough to, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't...
Brought the editor for them.
They need to, yeah, give a presentation if it's...
Right. Okay.
Well, and, you know, the part of this, too, what I brought up was the idea of making, like, in The Incredible Edible, when they encouraged all of the businesses and homes and stuff to convert to medicinal and edibles for people and animals in the wildlife across the board, it made it into a tourist attraction where people came to learn how to convert their cities in the same way. So, the benefit of the city of doing this is not only is it making the city more sustainable and supportive of the wildlife, and the human life, and the everybody, but it also, what Dave has been talking about, about having this be a green destination, it absolutely falls in that focus. Because you're showing people that you're planting things that are companion plants. They create little ecosystems unto themselves that support the insects, that support the wildlife, that support the watershed, all of that. By, instead of monocropping your yard or the business where everybody has, you know, twenty of the same plant out in front, you're actually mixing it up so that it supports a greater diversity. It's all about the health of the city and the health of the overall environment. So, that's why I brought it up in the first place. The water thing is a big deal to me because when I lived in Portland very shortly, I think, I don't know who was at the meeting, when I, when I went swimming in the Tuolaton River, and it was so full of pesticides that my skin was burning, and, and I had my dog with me. We had to both go home and hose off. And I had been living in Mount Chass for years, where the water is very pristine. So, I was shocked, 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 shocked that this condition existed in a state of Oregon that spouts itself as being an environmentally green state. And to have the water be that polluted, I was shocked, beyond shocked, you know? And I understand the water here is not in much better shape. So, I think we have a responsibility to somehow, as a city, do our part to clean that up. I know Portland's gotten some big ramps. I think they're working on the Willamette River, yeah, some of the health metal stuff. But anyway, so, the reason that I brought this up is...
Portland is mostly pesticides and herbicides in their Parks and Rec department that we did, just FYI.
Yeah. Well, and for the Tuolaton, I actually follow Tuolaton River Keepers on Facebook and stuff. They're always doing cleanups, and they... Actually, the Tuolaton River has gotten a lot better, I guess, from what it used to be. I went kayaking, I don't know, like, probably five years ago or something on it, and it, it was like, yay, you know, it's gotten better. But I, I guess it, I mean, it was easy way worse. Same with the Willamette River.
Well, this was...
Yeah, it's still bad.
Yeah, this was three years ago that I swam in it. So, so the trash part is better, but the leakage of the herbicides and pesticides is still going in, and to have it cause your skin to burn is not a good thing. You know, I was just like, "That's disgusting," you know? So, um, so, you know, and maybe this is more of a state level thing to be asking the state to be banning these things.
Well, and Trump just signed a thing to undo the clean water act or anything, so...
Well, it's, you know, the White House is, it's so hard to refuse.
Dave, like, yeah. We can only do what we can do, but we can keep trying. It just, it's so sad to hear about stuff like, like...
We just have to, we just have to press those people in, on the lowlands, you know, the grass root population is gonna trust.
Yeah.
And, and not trust, but make better decisions. You know, it really is up to us anyways. No matter what the law is, however, you have to make a decision. What's important, I don't know. But, um, so, yeah, I, I don't, this kind of ends up on my, in my lap because it's something I'm very adamant about, and I'm, that I'm doing as far as my nonprofit anyways, and that I teach herbology, and I teach about all this stuff, and it's something I just have a very high knowledge base about, which is why I, you know, pipe up about it. But if it's gonna be too complicated for the committee to take on, then I'm still doing it with my nonprofit, so it doesn't really matter. You know, it's up to you guys.
I think it's fine to throw it out as an idea since we have the three items, as long as, as long as there's something that can be delivered to, you know, in a way that people that haven't been in the meeting understand.
If you start getting too broad, for instance, using your example of swimming in the river and that kind of thing, then most of that, as far as the city of Lincoln City goes, is out of our control. But if you're talking about some ways that we can specifically affect our water here in the city, then, then I think the herbicide, pesticide, and natural plantings is fine. But you have, like, the Friends of the Sleds River that are trying to fight, you know, aerial spraying, and also the farm runoff. Those are things that I feel like are just outside of... The city council's not gonna wanna bite stuff like that off. You also have the whole issue of inadequate stream buffers for logging. Same kind of deal, it's contaminating the watershed. On the good side, the city of Lincoln City actually has made an effort in the past to purchase our watershed riparian areas. And so, we own, I guess, a small amount, the city owns a small amount of the... The riparian, by riparian areas, I just mean the buffers around the streams that are protecting them.
Like all the rye lands.
Because, like, there have been some cities recently that have had their watersheds destroyed because they didn't own their own. Now, every city can go out and buy every stream that's, that edges are very... I'm just saying that if we let it get too big, it will not be something that they'll want to do. But if we keep it focused, like we've said, on this objective, and that was why I was trying to figure out, okay, what's our objective here? If the objective is in a box that we can measure, and that they could, they being the councilors, can see as a doable thing that will, like you said about the Green City, it will look good for the city, that's fine. If we start using examples of cleaning up rivers and all of the rest of that, then I think we might be intrapause.
They have to be able to hear and digest it quickly.
And, and be able to equate it to, okay, I can relate, relate it, not equate, relate it to something that is tangible and doable, so... That, that also, um, kinda brings me back to something I think I said before, two meetings ago, was if we can make our presentations in the context of the bigger, like, either Green Lincoln City or, or something, if we can kind of... So, these aren't three disparate, random things we've come up with. These are all in the context of zero waste and that kind of thing. 'Cause the good idea is the, you know, all of that is, all of these can fall within there if we're, if we count you right.
Yeah. But we kind of, deliver that a candle.
I don't know if the water thing, what I'm doing, really falls in the zero waste, actually.
I guess it falls more in with Green Lincoln City. But in fact, I don't know, because zero waste, I don't have my little diagram with me, but zero waste affects, is, is all about climate, it's all about plastics, it's all about, it's what can we do to protect our environment for the future, so...
Well, and there is a watershed board, right? Isn't that what Joanne Dashil is on? She's actually asked about needing a squid and doing like a video or something to talk to...
There's local watersheds councils, and then there's a midval, midcoast watersheds council. That's, that's all of them, so...
So, it's kinda comforting, you know, at least that there, you know, there's people thinking about it.
Yes.
That are not, that are good, too. Everybody...
Anyway, it's just a thought. I mean, at the very least, keep it within the umbrella of, you know, having a Green Lincoln City or something. Just something that ties it together a little bit when we're talking about.
Yeah. Well, I think Mitch's Flavor is 101 food thing could be a good thing. It's gonna take time. I think with that, it's better to plan it well and plan it out of it.
Yes.
Um, so maybe even in the fall, or even next spring or something, yeah.
Next year, yeah.
It seems like a long ways to wait, but I think then, if you, if you do a better job of covering all your bases and like, presenting it in a really fun, organized way, I think that helps.
I think it also helps to get volunteers if you're, if you're planning it out.
Anyway. Who is going to put this together? An email and to me, so I can attach it to the city council agenda.
The whole thing, or...
Whatever you guys wanna present.
And if Dave is speaking, it seems like he should put the presentation together, but I hate to do that because he's not here, so...
Well, I wonder, so he has a presentation that he showed to us.
He has that five-minute presentation for that. It would need some tweaking.
All it talks about is, it doesn't talk about the food, it doesn't talk about the ingredients it is. And it's really, I mean, it's kind of this, but...
Yeah, I, I think the thing that he attached, or those attached at the end is...
I mean, I could put some slides together and send it to Dave and have Dave make it pretty. I don't know.
Yeah, I think if he...
How soon do you need it? How soon do you send the... That, that's a big, whether I can do it or not question.
The meeting's on February 10th.
Right.
Meeting's February 10th, and I will need to have it...
We have to notice it.
I'll need to have all the materials by January 31st.
That's three days. Less than three days, 'cause today's...
Yeah, yeah, because, because the packet has to be, I have to get the packet to run on, to review and approve by...
I guess it makes sense because you have to have, because...
I don't know if I can do it. Then it has to be published.
And then I don't, obviously, we don't know if Dave can do it either, so...
The 31st is a Friday.
Do we need to? So, that would, and I have, I have commitments all day, all three days. Tomorrow, Thursday, Friday. I could work on that a little bit, maybe on Thursday, if my five-year-old grandson lets me. Um, I don't know, I mean, one thing I guess we could do is to see how much I can get done and get it to Dave. And if we just don't have time to get it together, and he doesn't have time, then we're gonna have to move to the next month.
I would just focus on the content. I think you guys have most of the content there.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a whole quick presentation.
Yeah.
And the slides can be any...
Slide.
You can use some of the...
Right, yeah. Yeah. Yes, I mean, it just is, you have to have something that you can show, though. Whether it's PowerPoint, or PDF, or Word, or whatever, it doesn't matter. It just is, it has to be something that's clear with...
I think you guys have most of the content there. If you can maybe put some bullets on some of the pictures that they've already had, I think you could kind of recycle an acceptable presentation.
Well, just even in the couple pages at the end, it's only three pages, really.
And you could have a paper presentation to include in the packet, right? And they can follow along. You put all the content in the packet.
For council?
The packet is all electronic, so... Whatever it is, is what it is. Yeah, I need the PDF so that I can upload it and attach it to the agenda.
Well, do you think that, is there anything we need to add to Mitch included in the email?
I think it just needs to be laid out in bullets. It just is, I'm thinking of... I'll do it.
Well, I wonder if we could ask him via email to say, "Hey," you know...
It will, it will take longer to ask than it would be to put his thing in a slide.
That's true.
So it just is-
I agree.
If it just is, yeah, so. To ask and wait for the response and all of that, so.
Yeah. If this was a week ago, I still had time before we had to reopen, I would take it off for sure, but we're going to be, we're going to have to, we're going to have to. I am really quiet, as I was, the council has already shown big time support of a ban. It helps, it helps me a lot in thinking about sitting up there that, that's already, I mean, receptive to it.
Yeah, let's see, so you have just email, you have, so it's Catherine's, Mitch's email, no?
Yeah, Ken, uh, yes. And you just-
On the other, you have, because that was part of the packet.
And then the other.
And I would say, and I can push it till Monday, so if you could get it to me by Friday, and then I can get it to Dave, so he could have the weekend to-
I get, yeah, I guess that was what, I was hoping to have it for Dave so that he can at the very least, the weekend.
So that he can have the weekend to tweak it.
I'll try to do that. Yeah, and that was part of why I was thinking of the three days, I was also including his time too, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
We'll do her.
Okay.
Well, in the meantime, as I've been trying to do anyways, I'll, I'm always trying to look into other alternatives that we, if they say, all right, you know, then we can, they'll start looking into like, what are other options, what company, businesses could use to go through for, you know, you know, cornstarch or pumour or whatever option.
I think it also helps like you did, to look at what other cities are doing, how and how are they approaching it, and what are they, so.
Yeah. I don't have anything else.
All right.
You need a turn?
I need a turn.
Okay.
4:02.
Just under an hour this time.
Okay.